I'm Joe Holman with Maxfield Research. Maxfield has been around doing housing studies and commercial real estate market assessments for over 30 years. I've been with the company for about seven years now. Prior to that, I got my start in city planning and also spent some time in the commercial real estate industry. Just briefly, the content of the housing needs assessment. All of our market studies start with an analysis of demographic and economic trends. From there, we delve into existing housing stock conditions and characteristics and then move into the various residential real estate product types, for sale housing, rental housing, senior housing. We have a section on special needs housing in the community. And we conclude with demand calculations along with recommendations and kind of a SWOT analysis for the city. Anytime we prepare a study, we start with the definition of a primary market area from which most of the housing demand will be drawn. You know, in the case of River Falls, you know, in a comprehensive housing study, you know, that primary market area or PMA is going to be fairly broad because we're covering a whole range of housing product types, senior, rental, for sale. Some of the factors that we look at when determining the market area include commuting patterns, school district boundaries, just geographic boundaries, community orientation, things of that nature. So for River Falls, we determined that the primary market for housing demand would come from River Falls, Prescott, Ellsworth, and then the adjacent surrounding townships. When we do our demand calcs, we take into account that a portion of that demand will come from outside this market area, so we include that overage in our demand calculations. And in this case, we calculate demand for the entire market area and then estimate a capture rate, how much that demand will actually occur or be realized in the city of River Falls. And in our estimation, that ranges from 55 to 65 percent depending on product type. Some of the key demographic and economic drivers impacting housing demand in River Falls. One, River Falls has experienced solid population household growth, and we really, we expect that to continue out through 2030. Not as strong as the city experienced in the first half of the 2000s. As we all went through the recession, you know, the growth is starting to resume and we expect that to continue. And I'll get into this, you know, in the upcoming slides, but what we found is the housing supply in River Falls is very tight, whether it's rental housing or for sale housing. So in order for the city to accommodate new population household growth, new housing units will be needed in the city to, as I mentioned, to accommodate the forecasted growth. River Falls is blessed with a wide variety of age cohorts that will drive a variety of different housing product types. You know, the strong concentration of the younger and college student population, you know, really driving demand for rental housing. You're going to have strong growth in the older cohorts, which will drive more senior housing demand. You know, and then as these age groups move through the life cycle, you know, the younger folks that are renting now will move into entry level housing, then move up housing. So having that variety will help stimulate housing demand, you know, for the long term. Household incomes influencing affordability. I will touch on that in more detail a couple of slides down from here. But we expect that incomes in River Falls will continue, they have been growing, we expect them to continue growing, with the greatest growth growing in the upper income brackets over the next five to 10 years. One of the trends that we've noticed since 2010 to now, there's been a major shift in household types and household tenure in River Falls and not just River Falls, you know, throughout the metro area, in that households are tending to choose rental housing over owner housing. And that's by choice, and they're also staying in rental housing longer than they had in previous decades. So between 2010 and 2016, we found that there's been strong rental housing growth in the city, but the owner household growth has been fairly flat. You know, and in these household types, you know, I talked about the age distribution, you know, the younger folks, you know, form roommate households and they rent their housing. So we expect the household type trends to continue shifting as the age groups move through the life cycle. And I mentioned the college student age population, there's been fairly flat enrollment growth at UW River Falls. If that turns and they start adding more and more undergraduate students in particular, that will, you know, create more demand for rental housing in the city.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
So are you saying that if there's going to be an increasing demand, or there is an increasing demand, that demand is primarily in the rental market and not in the owner occupied market?
No, that shift has occurred and it's still occurring, but we expect that it to turn back into demand for owner housing going forward. There will continue to be demand for rental housing, but, you know, as these younger age groups, there's a population cohort called the echo boom, you know, and that's, you know, called 35-year-olds. They're staying in rental housing longer due to a variety of reasons, choice, financial constraints, student loans, you know, there's a lot of reasons for that. But they will eventually start to buy. In our interviews with real estate agents, you know, that was, that trend was kind of echoed and stated that they expect that population to start buying.
Okay.
Looking for entry level homes.
Not to take you too far off the line here, but to follow up on Mr. Watson's comment, would the, you mentioned the economy, but would supply also be a factor there? If they just like living here, but they can't find something to buy?
Right, right. And that is an issue. People in rental housing that want to buy an entry level home can't find the product easily right now, so that's another reason why they're staying in rental housing longer. So that would, that's the, kind of hits the supply.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
On the employment side, you know, the employment data is countywide, but, you know, in the market area, you know, since the recession, resident employment growth has really been outpacing labor force growth, causing unemployment rates to go down. We expect, you know, job growth to continue, you know, through the next five, 10, 15 years. One caveat to that is regionally, there's a concern that, you know, the labor supply is going to be shrinking before too long with increased retirements. So as a city, the more you can do to bring labor force here by providing housing options for, you know, a variety of, whether it's low income earners, you know, executives, providing a variety of housing product types to keep workers here and to bring workers here, it'll set you in a better position for further economic development going forward, if that makes sense, because employers are going to look for where the labor is. So if you can provide housing, bring labor here, that'll also attract employers. Right now, River Falls is a slight exporter of workers, meaning more people leave the city on a daily basis for employment than people coming in, but still, there's, you know, over 3,500 workers coming into River Falls daily for employment. You know, and a portion of those workers, you would likely or potentially seek housing in the city if it were available, you know, particularly those that are, you know, there's over 500 workers that commute from more than 50 miles away every day, many of which are maybe low income earners that either can't find affordable housing in the city and would want to. So that worker inflow creates an opportunity for housing.
Mr. Holman, could I, I'm sorry for interrupting you again, but could you talk a little bit more about how you arrived at that number? What did you, is this a formula, or is this?
No, that's, it's data from, it's census data from, it's the local employment household dynamics program through the Census Bureau. So they, they chart or log, you know, workers that either they work in the city or they live in the city and they work out, people that live in the city, work in the city, and vice versa. So it's, you know, government data that we draw that from. Now, this data is somewhat dated, the most recent is 2015, but that's just the most recent that's out there. So this isn't something that we created, it's just a data set that's available.
Okay, that, thank you. That answers my question.
Okay. Just a quick snapshot of existing housing stock in River Falls. We track building permits back 2000 through, you know, the most recent available when we finished the report was, which was towards the end of 17, 2017. We find that the housing production in River Falls is fairly steady. You know, prior to the recession, you can see in the graph, the taller green bars, River Falls produced about 144 new housing units a year. There's a dip during the recession and now it's slowly starting to climb back up. Since 2013, it's averaged 75 new housing units a year. So not quite, not back to where the pre-recession levels, but it's climbing. The next point, I found it interesting that detached single-family homes represent about 45 percent of all housing units in River Falls, which is actually a fairly small proportion relative to the surrounding area and the metro area, which has over 60 percent. It's just detached single family. So what that tells me is that there's a wider variety of housing product types in River Falls than what potential buyers or renters can find in the surrounding area. For home values, this data is based on American Community Survey data, so census data. Median home value in River Falls of just under 175,000 is about 21 percent lower than the metro median and, you know, about 30 percent lower than the remainder of the primary market area. But going along with that, rental housing is a little bit more expensive than the surrounding area, which creates some affordability issues, which I'll, again, I'll touch on that in a couple of slides. And the housing occupancy rates in the city of 95 percent are higher than the surrounding area, but comparable to the metro area. And what we found during our rental housing survey is that actual rental housing occupancy is much higher than this 95 percent. The for-sale housing market, you know, which, single-family homes, townhomes, things of that nature, pricing is on the rise and it surpassed the pre-recession highs. The median sale price right now for a single-family home in the city is 245,000, just slightly below the metro average. And then, you know, we say multifamily, but that'd be townhome, twinhome, attached single-family. Median is 154,000, still below the metro average of 180,000. Sales activities up, marketing times are down. The numbers are right there. So what these points tell me is that River Falls has a fairly strong or healthy for-sale housing market right now, with a slight concern that it may be undersupplied. Based on average home sales and the supply of homes currently available on the market, there's about a three-month supply of single-family homes and a 0.7-month supply of multifamily homes. Now, a healthy market or equilibrium in for-sale is a six-month supply of homes on the market. So the for-sale housing market right now is undersupplied. And with new development, there's about a two-year supply of residential lots in the city. Equilibrium is a three- to five-year supply of lots. So we recommend that the city, you know, actively pursue, you know, additional subdivision activity to get that back up to the three- to five-year supply. The rental market, I talked about this a couple of slides ago, but, so we surveyed a lot of rental properties in the city. The market rate vacancy rate is 1.2 percent, and the affordable subsidized projects in the city are 0.8 percent vacant, you know, really just a couple vacancies at the time of our survey. 5 percent vacancy is considered the healthy mark or equilibrium in a rental housing market. So your rental housing supply is very tight right now. And it's one of the comments that I heard talking to employers is that, you know, for any of their, you know, younger employees that may want to move here, really have a difficult time finding suitable housing. Rental rates are on the rise. The average market rate rent for an apartment unit is 8.49 a month, which equates to a dollar three per square foot. And I put that in there because I don't know if that seems high or low to you, but a new construction apartment building would probably have rents averaging about a dollar 30 a square foot, dollar 30 to a dollar 40. So rents in River Falls are somewhat high relative to the surrounding area, but you don't have a lot of real new rental housing product. So to get new housing or new rental housing in here, there's going to be a jump in what that price point is going to be. So when you have low equilibrium vacancy, rising rents just stimulates demand for new This is a busy graph, but what I'm trying to show is kind of the continuum of housing and services for the senior population, starting with, you know, the upper-left portion, it's seniors living independently in single-family homes and townhomes, you know, moving then into an age-restrictive active adult community, either rental or owner occupied. Congregate housing, it's independent living with services available typically à la carte, moving into assisted living, memory care, and skilled nursing care. So what we found with the senior housing, one, there's the affordable rental units, senior rental units are fully occupied throughout the city. You know, so there's definitely pent-up demand for more senior housing units in the city. For the market rate units, there's really not a lot of age-restricted market rate housing in the city, and the product that we surveyed, it's about half-full right now. As you get into the service-enhanced housing, congregant and assisted living, you know, equilibrium for a service-enhanced housing is about 7 percent vacancy. So the assisted living and congregant units are slightly below equilibrium, while memory care and skilled nursing, the higher acuity housing, has fairly high vacancy rates. Just a quick slide on the special needs. I think the most important point here to me is the second one. These points are really based on our interviews with special needs providers in the surrounding area, and they cited several things that they need. But for a housing study, they need more affordable housing to serve low-income households that are trying to exit existing shelters. Right now, they have, they may have to travel well into the cities or Eau Claire, really outside the market area to find affordable housing as they try and exit shelters. It's just, they said there's nothing available in River Falls, you know, for those folks that are trying to get out of the shelters. For summary of housing affordability in the city, there's a federal definition for a cost-burdened household, and that's for any household paying 30 percent or more of their gross income on housing. There are a lot of households that choose to pay more than that because it's, that's a priority for them. They'd rather spend more on housing than cars or whatever. But that 30 percent is the definition for cost burden. 35 percent of the households in River Falls are currently cost burden based on that definition compared to 28 percent in the metro area. But I thought the sub-points here are interesting to me. In the owner occupied market, 18 percent of River Falls owner occupied households are cost burden, so lower than what we're seeing in the metro area, which is 21 percent. But on the renter's side, over half of the renter households in River Falls are cost burdened, spending more than 30 percent of their income on rental housing costs compared to 46 percent in the metro area, you know, suggesting that there's some need for more affordable rental housing in the city. The Housing Authority currently serves, I think, 63 households through the Housing Choice voucher program, and there are over 360 households on the waiting list, again, kind of illustrating how much demand there is for affordable housing in the city. The graph below is probably hard to read. This is shown in more detail in the market study, but what we're trying to show is housing affordability based on household income in the city. So if somebody wanted to buy a move-up home priced at $300,000, they'd need a minimum income of just over $77,000 to not be cost burdened. And currently, there are, you know, just under 60 percent of the owner households in the city could afford a move-up home. So I don't need to go through this in detail, but the point that jumped out to me was for a new one-bedroom apartment, that we estimate would come in at about $900 a month. A renter household would need an income of about $36,000 to be able to afford that, and just about 42 percent of the renter households could afford that in the city. So a fairly small proportion of the renter households can afford new construction. Moving into our demand analysis, when we calculate demand, we take into account household growth, turnover of existing households, propensity to rent or own, and then just current market trends. And we projected our general occupancy or non-senior housing demand out through 2030, you know, and we find that there will be demand for, you know, just over 1,500 new housing units in the city, but by 2030, most of which would be single-family homes. There are single-family for-sale units, just over 540 units. We also think there will be strong demand and growing demand for for-sale multifamily, so townhomes and twinhomes. We find strong demand for new market rate rental units, and the same for affordable rental units. We split affordable between shallow subsidy, which is basically catering to households at 40 to 60 percent of area median income, and deep subsidy is, you know, 30 percent or below. There's really, people aren't really building deep subsidy rental housing anymore, there's just really not funding available through HUD, but there is certainly demand. You know, we find demand for about 200 units, you know, a portion of that can be taken care of with the Section 8 vouchers, but we also know there's a pretty deep waiting list there. On the senior side, we find demand for, call it 570 senior housing units by 2022, 179 market rate active adult units. So active adult is no services, just an age-restricted community. Over 200 subsidized senior units. As I mentioned, you know, the existing affordable senior units are fully occupied in the city, and we think there's immediate demand for more affordable senior units in the city. And then 88 congregant, 68 assisted living, and then 19 memory care units in 2022. We find essentially no demand for new skilled nursing beds right now, and that's a trend that's happening everywhere, you know, with, you know, and that's caused by several things, but, you know, there are new service levels available now that weren't available back in the 70s and 80s. So residents don't need to move from their single-family home into a skilled nursing facility, you know, they can go through the continuum of housing and gain services and care as needed, rather than it's jumping right into an institution. And finally, just our final assessment or conclusions, on the for-sale, single-family side, we think that most of the new development should be priced in the move-up category of $200,000 to $400,000. While there's really strong demand for entry-level housing and first-time home buyers, it's hard for a builder to develop new single-family homes that can sell for that price point of below 200,000. But by building more move-up housing, people will move out of their entry-level homes into a move-up and then creating turnover of those lower-priced entry-level homes. We also find that there's going to be growing demand for townhomes, twinhomes in the market, particularly for the older households, as they want to move out of a single-family home, but not yet ready to move into service-enhanced housing. And that can also be a target for an entry-level buyer, depending on price point. But again, moving seniors, you know, out of a single-family home into, you know, into new construction townhomes can also create turnover and serve as a market for younger buyers. On the rental side, we think there's demand in the market for a new upper to middle-market rental project. You know, I mentioned the $900 a month for one-bedroom, but we would expect this project not to target students, but to target young households that are out of college and are started in their careers. You know, it might be a married couple, it might be a single person. And what we're finding is that the empty nesters are also really being drawn to highly amenitized apartment living. That's really what's driving a lot of the apartment boom in, you know, in the Seven County core of the metro area. So, but in order to really kind of achieve this upper market or middle market, you need to be able to provide amenities that aren't currently available, things like stainless appliances, granite countertops, underground heated parking, you know, outdoor recreation, things like that. And based on our survey, that those amenities just really aren't available right now. And in the senior side, we think there's an immediate need for active adult affordable rental, and we also think there's room in the market for a catered living project, which is a kind of a hybrid of independent living and assisted living, where a resident can start, you know, move in independently and then gain services as needed. Based on the current vacancy of memory care, we don't think there's an immediate need for new memory care units in the city, but, you know, in five, 10 years, that need will grow. So the senior housing demand will be sustained over the next 10, 10-plus years. So that really, that concludes my presentation. I'll open up for whatever questions you might have.
Yep. Go ahead.
We're pretty, or have been pretty successful in the last few years attracting businesses, large businesses to town here, but it sounds to me like we're having a hard time keeping those people here to earn enough money to build or to buy or rent the new housing we seem to need here, too. So how important is it for us to talk to businesses that have a wage scale that matches up with the housing needs in River Falls?
Yeah, I mean, it is a concern. So the businesses that I talked to, one of the questions I asked is it, is the availability or lack of housing impacting your ability to recruit employees? And really, they all had the same answer with, you know, it's kind of, not really, because the commute shed for River Falls is really large. I mean, you pull from the East Metro, from Eau Claire, you know, people, you know, we saw in the commuting patterns that people are coming from a long ways out. But what I heard is that there are employees that want to live here, you know, if they're starting a family, they want to be in the school district, but they can't, they can't find the affordable entry-level home. And when those homes open up, they move quickly. And the same thing, you know, if you're a young couple or a young professional, you know, if you're going to, if you want to rent, you want to rent something newer, nicer, you know, you don't want to live the college lifestyle anymore, and you probably don't want to be in the same building as a lot of college students. So, but that's not a product that's readily available in the city, the new rental product. So it is hard for a lot of the employees that want to live here to find the housing.
Okay. You recognize it, you recognize it in some of the information as I read through this, and I can't put my fingers on it right now, but I do wonder a little bit about how much of the income, you know, broken down by under 25, is skewed by college students. You do recognize it in here, but I think that plays a much larger part in that affordability metrics that you were using before about the, when you're putting in 30 percent.
It does, but it's not all college students. I mean, I'm not going to remember. One of the employers I talked to, they're hiring, they're expanding, there's a lot of low-wage earners, and they're coming from St. Paul. They just, they have nowhere to live closer. Now, some of them are choosing to live in St. Paul due to, you know, lifestyle choices, but the housing options just aren't there for the lower-wage earners. But you're right, you, there's a big chunk of the younger cohort that have the lower incomes, and a lot of those are college students.
Yeah. I mean, that doesn't take away from the need by any means, but I just, I want to make sure as people use this document that we don't, that they don't look at and go, oh, jeez, you know. that we don't, that they don't look at and go, oh, jeez, you know, there is a little bit of a skew there with the college factor.
Is it safe to assume that those that are commuting elsewhere are earning more money than they would here?
For employment?
Right.
That would be an assumption. I don't, you know, I didn't get into why people are leaving the city for employment. You know, there, there is some information in the study, you know, kind of a brief breakdown on, on income, you know, some income ranges, so you can kind of look at it, see, see what they're making, the people that are moving out, but.
I got a quick question about, and I don't know if part of, part of what you guys do, if you guys spend time with staff, talking to them about how we talk to developers, how we've always talked to developers, hey, we need, we have a need for this, we have a need for that. Do you, I don't know if that's part of what you guys do, but are we missing something? Is there somewhere, is there something different that you can see that we should be doing?
No, you know, if I could summarize your housing market in, you know, just a quick phrase, I would say it's really healthy, if a little bit undersupplied.
Right.
You have demand for, for really the full spectrum of housing product types. You know, the executive-level homes are moving much slower than, than the move-ups in the entry level, but that's, that's typical. So, so I don't think you're, you're missing anything. But I, but I do think that, like I said, you, you are undersupplied, and I don't think you want to continue to trend that way. Because, because it will kind of snuff out the growth potential if you don't have the housing available.
So, so, and, you know, everybody knows development's starting to come back. Developers coming up, and now they're starting to look to buy land and build. So the way we're doing things, the way the staff has always worked with the developers, you think, and granted, this, I know you're not, you don't have a crystal ball, but we seem to be on the right path anyways. Do you think?
Yeah, yes.
From what you've seen in the study.
So from the people I've talked to, you know, one of the questions I typically ask is, you know, what can the city do to help? Can the city be doing something differently or do more? And, and everyone's, you know, is over the phone, so it's hard to shrug your shoulders over the phone. But that was kind of the, the feel I got from the responses, like, you know, the city's fine. So.
Well, being in the industry, I think it's safe to say that bridging the, the cost gap is a huge problem. You know, I don't know what our costs have gone up over the last three years, but I bet it's thirty or forty percent. So there's your affordability problem right there. It just costs that much. We can do free building permits here, but it wouldn't bridge the gap.
If it's impossible to build a single-family house for less than two-hundred thousand.
That's, that's the rub.
That's your reality right there.
Yeah, that's, I mean, where the, the turnover is, becomes important.
Right.
Right.
Turnover of the, the lower-priced homes.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Joe, can I ask a question, a couple of questions? Or I heard one comment you made, maybe an opportunity to elaborate. So I heard you say it, and I'm not sure that I pulled it out of the report, so I'm glad you mentioned it. But I think what I heard you say is that one thing that would help the overall market, given the affordability gap in building a new house for, for that entry level, is finding products in that two-hundred to four-hundred thousand dollar range that will be attractive to people to move out of the houses that they're already in.
Correct.
And I saw in the report, you know, we have twenty percent of the housing in River Falls is built when mine was, you know, between two thousand and, two thousand and nine.
Okay.
I have a two thousand and one home. And, and then sixteen percent was built in the seventies. And so if you're assuming that many of those, that thirty-six percent homes are those affordable, you know, they would be available at two-hundred or two-twenty-five, which I'm not sure they are. But maybe the seventies, some of the seventies are. Are you saying that getting some effort in that two-hundred to four-hundred actually helps with the entry level? Because we've heard a lot of emphasis on, we've got to build entry-level affordable housing. And I think what I heard you say is we've got to build more expensive housing so that people can move out of their entry-level affordable housing and let somebody else into it.
Yeah.
Because they can afford it.
Yeah, and the solution, I think, is, is across the board. But, but by building more move-up housing in that two-hundred to four-hundred thousand range, that, that will get people out of, you know, assuming that they're in the market now, they live in River Falls now. Typically, people don't make lateral moves from one house to one house. They, you know, they move up until it's time to move down. So theoretically, they would move out of a, a lower-priced entry-level-priced home. And that would open that up to a, a younger, you know, potentially younger buyer, somebody that's in the market for an entry-level home.
So if we talked to builders about how, well, maybe, or how could they do those kind of projects, that would help with, with, that could be seen as helping with the entry-level housing issue? The second question is, to put you on the spot a little bit, but I know you, Maxfield is hired by developers. So the developers say, should we really buy, build this, should we really do that? And you do more specific analysis, but if you, if a developer came to you and said, what is the one thing I should build in River Falls based on your results? What is, is there one or two products that you really think developers ought to? We should expect developers to be coming to us tomorrow after this report and wanting to build.
Yeah, you know, to limit it to one or two, you know, I would say building detached, single-family homes is going to be a pretty safe investment in River Falls. People want to move here, and the school district is great. You know, there, there's a lot of amenities here. People want to raise their families here. I heard that from everyone I talked to. So, so that product, you know, the move-up, single-family home, it, it can draw people in from, you know, from, from quite a range. You know, people that are starting families, you know, if they can afford, you know, the two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-thousand-dollar home, you know, that's going to be a product that, you know, that will be in demand. I also think that River Falls needs a, a new market rate rental housing community. You know, that, that can, you know, be a bridge for people that, that want to move out of some of the older rental stock but haven't found a home yet. You know, they can move into a newer, nicer apartment, you know, for a year, for two years. And that can also be, be a market for, for the older household that doesn't, you know, like this, the thought of moving into an age-restricted community, but they don't want to, you know, maintain their single-family home anymore. You know, as I mentioned, a highly amenitized apartment product is really drawing a lot of the baby boom population out of single-family homes.
And that's the product that's identified as like a, a three-bedroom at sixteen or seventeen hundred dollars, or is that a higher?
It, it could be, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, you, to get into the specifics of, of unit types, you know, I would, you know, it'd probably be weighted heavier towards one- and two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units in terms of the total unit mix for, for a new product. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
I think it does.
Okay.
Do you have any advice for us on the five-bedroom unit issue we have in River Falls?
No, yeah, that's a college student product. You know, it's rented by the bedroom typically, not the occupant, or not, not for the whole unit. Oftentimes, they'll, they'll rent it on a per-bedroom basis. And I guess I don't know what the problem is you're referring to, but.
Well, I didn't, I didn't see in your report, I'm not being wholly sarcastic, but you're not recommending that we would have a big demand for more five, five-bedroom units. I didn't see that in the report.
No, I didn't hear that from anyone. And, and I don't think I've ever, no.
But it's not a crossover product either.
I have to be, I have to, I have to, if I'm doing a, a study for a, a college housing or student housing developer, and they want to do something in River Falls, you know, a five-bedroom component is probably going to be a part of that. You know, so we'd have to examine, you know, how the five-bedroom units are doing occupancy-wise, you know, and what the demand is like. But, but that, that is really, that's, that's a student-oriented product.
The answer is maybe we do have demand even for that.
There could be, certainly, yeah.
A wide demand for lots of products and.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you know, for new product, that's an affordable way for college-age students to live in a new building. They, they room up together. And, and new, new products typically highly amenitized.
Anybody else? Questions?
I have one comment, and that's just to say that, you know, it's our choice as to how fast we want to grow. It's our choice as to where we want to grow, you know, as a community. Obviously, we all represent different aspects of this community. You know, there are demand, there's demand out there, and, and, and there are demand calculations, and, but we aren't, we don't want the, the tail wagging the dog, you know, as far as that goes in my mind. You know, we want to be thoughtful about how, you know, what the character of the city is going to be in the future, how we want that to play out. And so this is really good information, and I look forward to seeing where we can take it.
Okay, thank you. Really appreciate it. Okay, next move on to administrator's report. If anybody has anything for Scott, Scott?
I got something.
For us?
Hi, Colony Command. The River Falls EMS and Police Department.